If I could, please ask everyone to rise for our pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation.
(inaudible) (inaudible) the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(inaudible). Graciously, Lord, you follow the Lord. First of all, thank you for the gift of this day. To be with our citizens, to have the opportunity to do this, to be... I ask that you be in these chambers tonight, but you guide our tongues, you guide our minds. But also, thank you for all the families that are represented here this night. Also, I ask that you be with all of our high schoolers that are going to be parading. And watch over them. Lord, as always, I ask you to be with our body. (inaudible). Lord, as always, we thank you for your Son, Jesus, in His name.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Gillespie.
Here.
Councilman Wood.
Here.
Councilman Argo.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Councilman Reniger.
Here.
Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Councilman Fink.
Here.
Having a quorum being established, I hereby call this Prattville City Council meeting to order. We're ready to conduct business. Members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, I call your attention to our character trait for the month of October, using difficult times to demonstrate my commitment to those I serve, which is loyalty. Members of the council, I call your attention to the public hearing and city council meeting minutes of September the 21st and our work session and public hearing on September the 28th. I hope you found those minutes to be in good order, and if so, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Reniger to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion, changes, additions, deletions, comments about the minutes? All in favor of adopting the minutes submitted will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed will say nay. Chair votes aye, and the minutes will stand approved. Ladies and gentlemen, the audience, this is your opportunity to address the city council on any issue. All I ask that you do is you raise your hand, and I will call on you, and at that time, please come forward to the podium, and before you begin your remarks, if you will give us your name and your address, so that we'll have a record of your attendance. The only thing I'm going to ask this evening is that if you are here to speak about the budget, and you had an opportunity to speak at the public hearing last Tuesday evening, I ask that you keep your remarks as brief as possible. Others, I'm going to ask that you keep your remarks to about three minutes or less, so that we can get through to our agenda this evening. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the city council on any issue? Mr. Grissette.
Randy Grissette, 216 Deerwood Drive, Prattville. Appreciate you giving us the opportunity to come back for you tonight. I'm also here as chairman of the Prattville Area Chamber of Commerce on their behalf. I'd like to read a prepared statement, if you don't mind. Council members, thank you on behalf of the Prattville Area Chamber of Commerce for supporting a partnership that goes back many years. This partnership is a collaboration of city, county, and private business resources that has enabled our community to grow in commerce and enhance the quality of life for our citizens. The city's appropriations to the chamber have contributed greatly to the success of this joint venture. The key to the partnership is a collaborative effort. This combined effort has yielded growth in successful business and community development. As evidence of our healthy business environment, the city has seen an increase in annual business license revenue from 2.2 million in the year 2000 to 4.2 million that is included in our budget, in our proposed budget. In 1995, before the city's investment created a formal economic development initiative with the chamber, the city's annual lodging tax was $94,150. For the upcoming 2010-2011 year, the city's annual lodging tax is budgeted at 1.2 million. Successes like these led us to the Preferred Way Campaign, which made possible a new chamber facility, growth in tourism, economic development, and workforce development to support existing business and industry. The month of October marks the milestone as we start our 16th year of collaborating with the city and economic development efforts. Gentlemen, please continue your financial support of this partnership that has not only produced financial results, but has added to the quality of life for our citizens. In conclusion, I ask that you support the proposed budget appropriation for the chamber and for the Preferred Way Campaign. Thank you.
Before you leave the podium, any members of the council have a question for Mr. Grissette? Mr. Gillespie.
Not necessarily a question, but a statement, and I really appreciate everything that the chamber does. Like I said the other night in our work session, I really feel like that you guys are an extension of the city, an arm of the city. You do a valuable service that, I don't know how to compare it to anything else, but I totally support you guys. But now, on the pledge that was made, that you brought up just then, I do have a problem with it, because I don't think it was properly brought before the council, and I have some concerns there. I'm not going to try to stop the pledge from getting to you down the road, but tonight, I am going to ask that it be removed, because I don't think it was properly done. And then, later on this afternoon, I did find some information here, and it might possibly not have been done legally, but the city attorney and I are still working on that. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Dr. Miller.
Randy, the total amount of the Preferred Way Campaign was what?
Of the campaign?
Right.
It was upwards of close to 1.2 million.
Total? Was the fund right, the effort?
Well, I think that was the private portion. That was the private business portion, and then there was 325 from the city, 325 from the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Wood.
That was a question that I was about to ask. One other question, follow-up on what Dr. Miller asked. What is the balance on that campaign at? Do you know?
The balance on?
To build.
The entire?
Right.
We have collected probably 75 percent of that.
You all not behind on any payments, are you?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Grissette? Thank you, Randy. Appreciate you coming tonight. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the city council on any issue? Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I only have several quick items just to bring to your attention. First of all, I want you to know that the Prattaga Art Guild's Fall Art Show is happening. It's in progress right now until 7:00 at the art house behind us. This Friday is Think Pink Day in Prattville, and early at 7:00, we'll be turning the fountain pink at Heritage Park. I would encourage you, if you... Mr. Wood is in the spirit, as I have noticed. He knew that this was what this week was, for breast cancer awareness. This is our second annual event. We had this event last year, and there'll be a good number of breast cancer survivors that have been invited, as well as an LPGA star. Speaking of LPGA, it is Classic Week here in Prattville. I know there's much excitement and anticipation all over our community. I talked with a local business owner today who wanted me to thank, you know, you guys for supporting the LPGA Navistar Classic. He said his business always increases the week before the tournament. He's an... And so, he wanted me to pass that along to you. Finally, I want to remind you that Monday is Columbus Day. It is a city holiday. However, sanitation, our sanitation department will be working, and also, our wastewater department will be working, and also, our fire and police departments will be working. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone have any questions or comments for Mayor Byard? Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it very much. Mr. Gillespie, do you have a report?
No.
Mr. Wood.
No.
Dr. Miller.
I did want to make a couple of comments. I think as a member of the Finance Committee, we have put an inordinate amount of time, energy, and effort into the process this year, and certainly more than I recall doing in the past as either a regular, you know, non-Finance Committee member of this council and during the past couple of years on the Finance Committee. And with that, I have continued to, I think, struggle with the world economic situation, you know, both global, national, state, and local, and nobody's got a crystal ball. And I think that we have, individually and as a group, all really struggled with this, and certainly, we come at it, you know, with our different perspectives, but at the end of the day, I think the common goal is to do what's right by the city. With that in mind, I want to say that there is one area that, you know, I've been concerned about, and that is the city's reserve fund. And I had talked about the possibility of using some of the funds from the oil and gas tax revenue in terms of shifting those from essentially a paving project to use them in, I guess, helping to fund some legitimate expenses in the street department and essentially freeing up some funds to make them available in a reserve, sort of a capacity. And I have talked about that. I think I mentioned it at the work session a week or so ago, and what I would like to share with the council tonight is, I am not planning to bring an amendment in that regard, but I have talked with the mayor and the Finance Committee, and I would ask that we kind of look at this as an opportunity that needs to be explored further, and I would like for the Finance Committee to meet in the near future, involve the city engineer, and I think the mayor's as much as committed to defer any expenditure of those funds until we can kind of get through that process and gauge things over the coming months. So I feel like that sort of is equal to what I would have accomplished in large part with an amendment in that regard, so I know I bounced that idea off a couple of my fellow councilmen and tried to get some input on that piece, but I'm cheering with you that I won't be bringing an amendment that I do, based on conversation with the mayor and Finance Committee, have, I think, a sense of support, that we will defer moving forward with the paving project in the near future to give the Finance Committee time to kind of reassess the possibilities there. And that was it.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Mr. Reniger.
Yes, sir. On a lotter note, this morning, we had the Junior Clinic sponsored by Navistar and Monaco RV. Had a thousand grammar school students from Attaw County out there, from private and public schools. Had a great show for them, introduced them to the world of golf, fed them well, and they were all very well behaved, and it was just a wonderful experience.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bowles.
No.
Mr. Fink.
No.
Members of the council, ladies and gentlemen, the Finance Committee did meet one last time with Mayor Byard and with Finance Director Rod Morgan last evening. We had an opportunity to go over the budget one last time to discuss items or issues that may be still of interest to council members. I appreciate Dr. Miller's comments, and I will get with you and Mr. Reniger and schedule a Finance Committee meeting so that we'll have an opportunity to look further at your ideas, and appreciate you bringing that forward this evening. We're ready to go into our council agenda. We have three items on our agenda this evening. Resolution number one is to adopt the City of Prattville Fiscal Year 2010-2011 General Operating Fund Budget. Dr. Miller, would you please introduce resolution number one?
Be it therefore resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that for the purpose of financing the conduct of affairs of the City of Prattville, Alabama during the period October 1, 2010, and ending September 30, 2011, inclusive the general fund operating budget for the city's revenues and expenditures for such period as prepared and submitted to the council by the mayor, be and the same as hereby approved and adopted as the official fiscal 2011 budget for the City of Prattville, Alabama, which includes the following summary of projected revenues. David, do I... I don't need to read those. Total $37,016,000. That the following departmental expenditures are approved and appropriated in the various activities of the City of Prattville for fiscal year 2010-2011 for general operating is as follows. That the amounts listed above, as shown by the fiscal budget expenditures, are hereby appropriated and approved for uses indicated, except: Community initiatives line item to specific agencies and institutions are appropriated and approved, conditioned on each being made lawful and legal. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville established a general fund balance policy to build and maintain a general fund reserve balance of at least 15 percent. Mr. President, I so move.
Dr. Miller has moved resolution number one. Is there a second?
Second motion.
Seconded by Councilman Reniger. Any discussion on resolution number one? Mr. Gillespie.
Yes, sir. Pass down our written request amendment. I make a motion that on page 15, line item 10-6201-06-504, sidewalks and curb cuts, curb repairs, raise it to $50,000, coming from the restricted oil and gas funds.
Mr. Gillespie has made a motion, and Mr. Gillespie, help me with this word where the punch hole is.
Raise.
Raise?
Raise.
Mr. Gillespie has made a motion on page 15, line 10-6201-06-504, sidewalk, raise it to $50,000, coming from the restricted oil and gas funds. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bowles. Any discussion on the motion to establish or to raise to $50,000 the sidewalk repair money from the restricted oil and gas funds? Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Fink.
Yeah, just for point of clarification, that's the same pool of money that we do the streets with is what you're talking about, correct? That same money?
It's the same money that we pulled it from last year, from our fuel tax, and last year, we made an amendment also to raise it to 50,000, and I put it back in the same area as last year.
Any other discussion on the motion? Members of the council, I will let you know that the Finance Committee did discuss this, and we are in agreement with this amendment. Everyone knows. Any more discussion on the amendment from Mr. Gillespie, raising the line for sidewalk repair to $50,000, coming from the restricted oil and gas funds? Anything further? All in favor of the amendment will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed will say nay. Chair votes aye. The amendment's adopted. Anything further on resolution number one? Mr. Gillespie.
Yes, sir. Like to make another motion, another amendment, page 32, line item 10-6404-10-681, reduce 348,000 down to 308,000.
Mr. Gillespie has made a motion on page 32, line 10-6404-10-681, which is reducing from $348,000 down to $308,000 appropriation to the Chamber of Commerce. And, Mr. Gillespie, if you don't mind, just before I ask for a second on that motion, where would that $40,000 go? If it is removed, where would it go?
Well, I actually believe that the figures that we have estimated are overestimated, and so I don't think we're going to be collecting that money anyway. But if we do happen to collect it, then it should go into our reserve fund.
Okay. So then the rest of your motion will be, the $40,000 would be placed in the operational reserve fund?
Yes.
All right. Members of the council, you have heard the motion from Mr. Gillespie. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Any discussion on the motion to reduce the chamber appropriation from 348 to 308,000, with that 40,000 being placed in the operational reserve fund? Mr. Gillespie.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just to give everybody a timeline on all this is that, if you recall, back when we had our work session on the budget, it was declared that this was a pledge and not a contract service, that... And from what I have been able to gather, and I've gotten several different answers. Initially, was told that the mayor and our last Finance Director made a pledge to the chamber, and I talked with him, and he told me that it was 140,000 that was pledged, and it was already paid. I have also talked with Connie Bainbridge with the chamber, and she later informed me that it was 325,000 that was pledged, but only 40,000 has been paid. But there is no paperwork to validate any of this, and I've also been doing a little bit of research and did not locate it until late this afternoon in one of our municipal handbooks, handbooks for mayors and council members, and on page 47, and there still needs to be some research still on this, but on page 47, it says, "Municipality may not make contributions to the Chamber of Commerce." Basically, where I'm going with this is that the pledge has not been properly brought before the council. According to this handbook, the pledge is... Should not be made, and so I think we need to go ahead and reduce this out of the budget, and as you have already said, Mr. President, in earlier statements, that this is a living and breathing document, and we can come back and change it as we need to. And I think that once we get this worked out, then we can come back and add it to it, if that's the choice of the council, to do that. But right now, the policy that has been brought before us of just making pledges at a whim is... Needs to stop, and that's pretty much how this has been going. So if this needs to come back before us and let us vote on it, I don't have a problem with that. But as of right now, it needs to be removed from our budget until we can properly check it, and then it probably be brought back before us.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. Anyone else wish to speak to this amendment proposed by Mr. Gillespie?
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. First of all, I thank you, Mr. Grissette, for coming forward tonight, and any other chamber's members that may be present. For many years, I've supported the chamber. I don't think there's been a budget passed that I haven't supported the chamber, still support the chamber. But I must agree with Mr. Gillespie on this particular $40,000 here. We would still give the chamber $308,000, but I agree at this particular time, and especially with the restraints that we have on this particular budget, along with what Councilman Miller said earlier about trying to preserve as much money as we possibly can, I think that this time, with the economic situation being what it is, knowing that we have the restraints that we have, and knowing that there are some things that we need to answer, I concur with removing this money at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Anything further on the motion by Mr. Gillespie?
I'll try.
Mr. Bowles.
I just want to say towards the chamber that I'm fully supporting the chamber. I'm a member in our business, have been for years, I think ever since the day the doors opened. But on this particular item, I would like for us to go back and look at it one more time and make sure we cross all our Ts and dot all our Is in the political environment that we're in today. And so I would ask that we would take this out also in a free visit in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Anything further? Dr. Miller.
I know Councilman Gillespie had just discovered some of this information, but David, what's your read on the legality?
I just happened to see.
So you've not had time to...
I have no...
Okay.
We're checking to tell you more, but...
I understand.
Members of the council, I will just let you know that as far as this item goes, I do not believe that what the way it's been done is improper. The mayor and the Finance Director, regardless of ever who he or she may be, made a pledge to the chamber. He then placed an amount towards that pledge in this budget for us to look at, which is what we're doing this evening, so I don't think that anything's been done improperly. However, I've not seen the league's handbook, so I'm not sure exactly what that relates to. I'd like to see that further. But I will say this, I do believe that the amount of money that's been placed in the budget has been done so properly. As of yesterday, the Finance Committee was in agreement that the 40,000 should be in there. I'm going to continue to vote that way until I'm told otherwise, and if it is improper, then we can always come back and amend the budget at a later time when we have better information. So at this time, I'm going to ask that we go ahead and go forward with it, whatever that's worth. Anything further on the motion from Mr. Gillespie to reduce the chamber line item 348 to 308, with the 40,000 going into operational reserve?
Can we have a division of the House on this vote?
We certainly may.
Thank you.
Clerk, I want to ask this. Is there anything further before we ask for a roll call vote? All right. On this amendment, moved by Mr. Gillespie, seconded by Mr. Bowles, clerk will call the roll.
Councilman Gillespie.
Aye.
Councilman Wood.
Aye.
Councilman Argo.
No.
Councilman Miller.
Nay.
Councilman...
Nay.
Councilman Bowles.
Yes.
Councilman Fink.
No.
On a vote of three to four, three ayes, four nays, the amendment fails. Is there anything further on resolution number one from the council? Mr. Gillespie.
Yes, sir. Page 32, also, line item 10-6404-10-694, 20,000 removed completely from that line item and placed back into our general fund.
Mr. Gillespie has made a motion, line 10-6404-10-694, $20,000 appropriation to the Attaw County Board of Education. This amendment would remove that 20,000 and place the money back in the operational reserve fund. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Any discussion on this amendment? Mr. Gillespie.
Yes, sir. Just to remind everybody that last year was the first year that we had this in our budget. At the time, I was told that we would have a... It would be earmarked to be spent within side the city limits of the school system of Attaw County, and since then, it has been brought to my attention that this was not earmarked, and it was actually spent on for some coaches and vand leader. So with that information, I think that we need to better put it to use in our budget.
Thank you. Anything further on the motion to amend? Clerk will call the roll on the motion to amend the budget.
Councilman Gillespie.
Aye.
Councilman Wood.
Nay.
Councilman Argo.
Nay.
Councilman Reniger?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Councilman Miller.
Nay.
And then Councilman Reniger was...
I've more than...
Thank you. Councilman Bowles.
Aye.
Councilman Fink.
Nay.
By a vote of three ayes, four nays, the amendment fails. Members of the council, is there anything further on resolution number one? Mr. Bowles.
I would like to make a motion to amend the Legislative Department budget by eliminating the fund items for education, lodging, meals, and travel by $16,000 and increasing the general operation reserve balance by the same amount.
Mr. Bowles has made a motion to relieve... Remove, I'm sorry. Remove or reduce the Legislative Department budget line items, education, lodging, meals, and travel by $16,000 and increase the general operating reserve balance by the same amount. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gillespie. Any discussion on this motion? Mr. Bowles.
In the light of our financial situation and what's going on in the world around us, and that we cannot give out raises this year, I think it would be prudent for us to stay home this year. If there's any travels that need to be made, then we can look at them throughout the year, because they all say this is a living, breathing document, and we can adjust those travels as needed, on as-needed basis. And that's why I'm bringing this for you all tonight. Thank you.
Anything further on Mr. Bowles' amendment? Members of the council, I will speak to this briefly. The legislative line items for education, lodging, meals, and travel is basically divided up amongst the seven council members with an equal amount. A member can choose to travel or not. It is up to them. If they do travel, then they obviously have to go to an approved meeting, which would, in this case, we have two National League of Cities meetings... in this case, we have two National League of Cities meetings, and we have a Alabama League of Municipalities meeting, which is held inside the state. I happen to serve on the National League of Cities Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee. If you were to adopt this, I would not be able to travel to that meeting, which obviously I give of my time and take off time from work to do that. I think Mr. Bowles has an honorable idea. I wish that he would have left it at 1/7, which would have been the amount of money that he uses to travel, or chooses not to, and any other member of the council would be able to do the same. So I'm going to ask the council that they not adopt this amendment. If you choose not to travel, then that amount of money that would have been appropriated to your travel will then automatically go back into the general fund. So I'm going to ask that the council not adopt this amendment. Anything further on the motion to amend Legislative Department budget?
Roll call.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the Bowles' Number One Amendment?
Councilman Gillespie?
Nay.
Councilman Wood?
Aye.
Councilman Argo? Councilman Miller?
Nay.
Councilman Reniger?
Nay.
Councilman Bowles?
Aye.
Councilman Fink?
Nay.
On a vote of two ayes and five nays, Mr. Bowles' amendment fails. Mr. Bowles, do you have another amendment?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wood.
For clarification, I need the clerk to give me whether my vote was for the amendment or against the amendment. Please.
It is my understanding that when you voted, your vote would have been for the amendment.
No.
Okay.
Made a mistake.
Okay. Madam Clerk, with the permission of the council, would you please change Mr. Wood's vote so that it was a one-to-five vote, a one-to-six vote, I'm sorry?
Yeah, one-six, we'll change it.
No. Bill voted against it.
Okay. It's a motion to amend the Legislative Department budget by reducing the fund items in education, lodging, meals, travel by 10% from last year's budget to $13,950, and increasing the General Operations Reserve balance by $2,050.
Mr. Bowles has made a motion to amend the Legislative Department budget by reducing funding and items, education, lodging, meals, and travel by 10% from last year's budget to $13,950, and increase the General Operating Reserve balance by $2,050. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gillespie. Any discussion on this motion to amend? Mr. Bowles.
The reason I did this was because it came out that we were going to decrease our travel by 10%. And the way it worked out, it actually increased by 10%. It did. If you look in the items, our travel went down 10%, but our lodging went up, our meals went up, and our education went up, all by $500. So this would adjust it back down to everything being to a 10% decrease. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Anything further on the motion to amend? Rod, may I ask you quickly? When the Finance Committee met, we asked that when you finished the last document of the budget, the last presentation, we asked that you reduce these funding items by 10%. Is this a fair assessment of that, or do you believe that you have already reduced it by 10% per the Finance Committee's request?
I believe the Finance Committee requested after the last meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything further on Mr. Bowles' motion to amend?
Call the question.
I have a question.
Mr. Fink, hold the motion just one second. We'll vote one second.
Education was $4,500, while last year, education was $4,000. That's an increase, right?
I don't have a copy of the current budget.
Do you see that? Next page is the last year's budget.
I don't believe these are current, or the numbers from the current budget from last year.
Well, that's what was in the last year's budget that we voted on.
I believe this was an early version of the budget that I later changed. I had reduced legislative travel and was asked to reinstate it to current levels. I did that. I think this reflects the reduction of the major reinstating of the current levels.
Do we vote on that?
No, you didn't vote on this budget. You voted on...
Yeah, that was the budget I had last year. I kept it all year. That's the one I went off last year during this time.
I don't believe this one, I believe this was an early version. I don't, I apologize, it's not what I voted on. It's not what I voted on.
Can I get a copy of the last year's budget, then? If I've had the wrong budget for an entire year, I need a copy of that tomorrow, please.
Okay. We're going to get back to the motion to amend Mr. Bowles' Amendment Number Two. Anything further on that motion?
Roll call.
Clerk will call the roll on Bowles' Amendment Number Two.
Councilman Gillespie?
Aye.
Councilman Wood?
Nay.
Councilman Argo?
Nay.
Councilman Miller?
Nay.
Councilman Reniger?
Nay.
Councilman Bowles?
Aye.
Councilman Fink?
Nay.
On a vote of two to five, Bowles' Amendment Number Two, fails. Mr. Bowles.
I will make a motion to amend the Legislative Department budget by reducing the fund items in education, lodging, meal by the amount of $3,985, increase the General Operating Reserve balance by the same amount. This is the money that Councilman Ray Bowles and Bill Gillespie will not be using this year in travel. Thank you.
Mr. Bowles' Amendment Number Three, as stated. Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second that one.
Seconded by Mr. Reniger. Any discussion on Amendment Number Three?
I'm sorry, I was preoccupied.
It's all right. Any discussion on Bowles' Amendment Number Three?
No, sir.
Division of the House?
Sure.
Clerk will call the roll on Bowles' Amendment Number Three.
Councilman Gillespie?
Aye.
Councilman Wood?
Nay.
Councilman Argo?
Nay.
Councilman Miller?
Nay.
Councilman Reniger?
Aye.
Councilman Bowles?
Aye.
Nay.
On a vote of three to four, Bowles' Amendment Number Three fails. Mr. Bowles.
I'm sorry. Can I, like Councilman Wood, I voted the wrong way.
How did you vote?
I think I voted nay, but I think I meant aye.
Clerk, would you please tell us the vote?
In other words, I think this deserves to pass if they're requesting it. Did I vote...
I voted the wrong way.
Okay, so I need to change my vote.
So on a vote of four to three, Bowles' Amendment Number Three is adopted. Is that correct? Okay. Mr. Bowles.
That was a little bit...
All right, members of the council, is there anything further to come before the council on Resolution Number One as amended? Mr. Gillespie.
Not actually bring anything forward, but I just want to make a comment that I truly feel like these figures are, will never be reached. I don't think our revenues will come in that high, and for that reason, I will be voting against it.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. Anything further on Resolution Number One as amended? Mr. Bowles.
I would like to second his statement.
Thank you. Anything further on Resolution Number One as amended? Will clerk call the roll on the adoption of the budget as amended?
Councilman Gillespie?
Nay.
Councilman Wood?
Aye.
Councilman Argo?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Aye.
Councilman Reniger?
Aye.
Councilman Bowles?
Nay.
Councilman Fink?
Aye.
On a vote of five to two, unless someone's going to change their vote, a vote of five to two, Resolution Number One, which is the city's budget for fiscal year 2010, 2011, is adopted. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to address the council quickly. I apologize, I had to leave. We had a downtown business that was well-involved and is going to probably be a total loss. At this time, there's no, there have been no injuries, there was no one involved. It's Tina Moon's Law Office at the corner of Fourth and Chestnut, right directly across from First Methodist Church. Tonight's a busy night with the homecoming parade, so there's a lot of people that have walked down from the courthouse to the scene of that fire. But the police chief tells me that the parade is scheduled to go on as scheduled, and our fire department, public safety folks are still over there. And I do apologize for leaving. However, when a business is well-involved, that's one of the duties that a mayor has to do. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the update.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the update, and we thank the fire department for their quick action. Glad no one was hurt. Resolution Number Two is to reappoint Willis Bradford to the Library Board. Mr. Fink, would you please introduce Resolution Number Two?
Whereas a vacancy currently exists on the Library Board due to the term expiration of Willis Bradford on September 30, 2010, and whereas it is the desire of the Prattville City Council to fill that vacancy to ensure the continuity of the board's operation, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that Willis Bradford is hereby reappointed to fill the vacancy effective immediately, and said term will expire on September 30, 2014, or until his successor is duly qualified and appointed. So moved.
Mr. Fink has moved Resolution Number Two, appointing Willis Bradford to the Library Board. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilman Reniger. Any discussion on Resolution Number Two? All in, I'm sorry, did you have your hand up?
No.
Okay, all right. All in favor of Resolution Number Two will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed will say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number Two is adopted. Resolution Number Three is to award bid number 010-006 for Pest Control Services to Zap Pest Control. Mr. Wood, would you please introduce Resolution Number Three?
Whereas said bids were requested for bid number 010-006 for Pest Control Services for city-owned buildings and facilities pursuant to the General Competitive Bid Law, Section 41-16-50 Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, and whereas six bids were received open and read in public on September 29, 2010, and whereas the current contract with Cook's Pest Control has expired, and whereas the fiscal year 2011 budget allocated funding for said pest control services, and whereas Zap Pest Control was the lowest responsible bid for a three-year contract, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville, Highbury, awards bid number 010-006 in the amount of $2,540 annually to Zap Pest Control for a three-year contract for pest control services for the City of Prattville's building and facilities. It further resolved that Zap Pest Control will treat the following on an as-needed basis at the listed cost. Stellington Stadium, $45; Pratt Park Barbecue Pit, $25; Pratt Park Pool, concession locker rooms, restroom, $30; Matt Gray Park concessions, $30; Spinnas Park, $30; Bell Park, $30; David D. Westone Complex, $30; Westone Maintenance Building, $30; Newton Park, $30; Gene and Virginia Hall Fairground, $40. Be further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville, Highbury approves an appropriate funding from each listed department's budget line item, building maintenance. Mr. Chair, so...
Mr. Wood has moved Resolution Number Three. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion on Resolution Number Three? Mr. Bowles.
I'm not a bug man, but it concerns me a little bit about this bid, that they're $500 lower than the next bidder, and almost the midway point, they're almost $1,000 cheaper. So, and believe you me, I'm all about saving money. I think everybody knows that. But I do know, one time I had somebody give me a really cheap price on bugs, and I never, I always had bugs from that point on, because they didn't do the chemicals right. Do you think that might be the case here? Or should we go with this? I know by law, we can kick the lowest bid out and go with the second lowest, can't we? Does anybody know that? In the bid laws?
The council is free to do as it wishes. It is the recommendation of the staff that is responsible for this, that this one be accepted. So if you...
Have they worked for the city before?
Zap? I do not believe so.
So we're not familiar with them?
Well, I think it's, there's a difference in whether you're familiar with them and whether they've ever worked. They've never worked in the city.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that the $2,540, we're going to end up having more bugs than we do today, is my one question. And it goes against everything I believe in.
All right. Anything further on Resolution Number Three? All in favor of Resolution Number Three will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed will say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number Three is adopted. Anything else? Mr. Gillespie.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Since we have a budget for the next coming year, I hope that we can end our policy of having pledges done without properly being brought before the council. That's something that can be very dangerous. We need to be having contracts for LPGA. We need to be having contracts for paperwork for pretty much everything we do. This is not a small community anymore. We're medium-sized to large. We should be doing things a little more legal and proper-like. And to have these pledges being done without properly being brought before the council is not a good policy. Another thing I wish that the Finance Committee would look into is going away from the lump-sum budget that we have and going to a line-item budget or a program budget like they show listed in the municipal handbook. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. Mr. Wood. Dr. Miller.
No.
Mr. Reniger.
No, sir.
Mr. Bowles.
No, sir.
Mr. Fink.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we end our meeting, I do want to let you know that in case you were here last week, there was a pair of ladies' glasses found on one of the benches in the audience. If these glasses belong to you, or if you know of someone who may have left these glasses, please let them know that they're in the police department's lost and found. So if you will check with them, I'm sure they will be glad to get those glasses back to you. First of all, I would like to tell the City Council how much I appreciate their work on the budget this year. While we may not always agree on the line items or the ultimate budget, I do feel as though that this has been the most inclusive year that we have had on the budget in my 14 years of working on the budget. So I want to tell the council how much I appreciate that. I also want to tell Rod, Finance Director, and the mayor how much I appreciate their